I know. We remembered ahead of time this time.
Oh my, this chair is high.
I can't stand low chair.
I know. Whoever sits in this chair before our meetings is always real low.
Well, we had that guy send in a complaint.
Yeah, yeah.
But I think that money has to be spent.
I... Right. I'm pretty sure that's the case.
Unfortunately...
I thought that was funny. It was like, "That's the one item somebody commented on, the bike lanes."
I gotta find out what Doug thought of the letter from the guy.
Okay, okay, yeah. It was just addressed to Jim.
Well, I had an email from a guy who's real interested in the library, and I can't remember his name. Thought there were a lot of things we could do. I'm glad to hear you're interested. Hurry in and see if we can't get friends of library, dah 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 dah. So, he did a survey comparing our library to Hesperia's. Backed with three pages of recommendations of things we need to do. What's wrong with our library? Well, apparently not, but...
Gistiest.
Yes. Doug, what'd you think of those changes to the library? All his recommendations?
Oh, that. I thought you meant at the veterans thing. I thought you meant the little garden.
I don't know.
Oh. I almost just threw it away.
You wanna handle it or... Unfortunately, I invited all the...
Yes, you did. He just wants us to sell the golf course.
What?
Wants us to sell the golf course so we can build a better library.
Pay for the golf course.
Oh, no. He wants to raise, he wants to take money from the golf course and spend it on the library.
He wants to sell the golf course.
He wants to sell it?
Sell the golf course so we can build a better library.
That's a...
Or, uh, do...
I bury or throw it up there?
Or give it back to the county and have them build a big group?
That's not a bad thought. If they would do that. Probably not high on their spending.
It is five o'clock. I will call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Here.
Councilmember Negretti?
Here.
Mayor Protem Cox?
Here.
The absence of Mr. McEckren and Mayor Garcia is noted.
First thing on the agenda is for public comments. I won't go through that ritual because there is no one here and we have no cards to address the council. Then we have the closed session items, and so I will ask the attorney to cover that matter.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Cox. We have four items listed on the agenda this evening. One for the Airport Authority, which is existing litigation pursuant to government code 5495-6.9D1. It's the SEC case versus the City of Victorville. Item B is the same litigation matter on behalf of the City Council. Item C is conference with real property negotiators for the city pursuant to government code 5495-6.8. The property parcel is on McCart Road, and it's the APN number. And negotiating parties are set forth on the agenda. We have item D, which is Public Employee Performance Evaluation pursuant to government code 5495-7B and the position title of City Manager. But I also need to add an urgency item to do so.
An urgency or emergency?
Urgency.
Urgency, okay.
Would require a vote of the unanimous vote of the members here this evening pursuant to government code 5495-4.2B2. The item arose after the posting of the agenda and that there's immediate need. The item would be anticipated litigation pursuant to government code 5495-6.9D4. The issue revolves around a letter we received Friday after the posting of the agenda, late Friday, from the Department of Finance. And actually, this would be a closed session on behalf of the Airport Authority because the letter from the Department of Finance is challenging certain amounts that we need to use to pay amounts for bonded indebtedness. Unfortunately, per DOF, Department of Finance procedures, we have to respond within five days of receipt of the letter. Obviously, that is before the next meeting. But we want to get direction from the council as to how to respond and potentially maybe a filed claim with respect to this matter. So, again, I'd need a vote of this council to add that item. It's anticipated litigation.
Move to add the item.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Negretti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries with Mayor Garcia absent.
Okay. With that, we will adjourn to the executive session to consider these items that are on the agenda, and we will come back into regular session at six o'clock. Want to call the meeting to order. Roll call, please, with the council.
Councilmember Kennedy? Councilmember McEckren?
Here.
Councilmember Negretti?
Here.
Mayor Protem Cox?
Here.
Mayor Garcia's absence is noted.
We have called the meeting at five o'clock. We went into executive session. We have come out of the executive session. Asked the city attorney to provide a report.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Cox. We had four items on the agenda for closed session. One for the Airport Authority, existing litigation pursuant to government code 5495-6.9D1. That's the SEC case versus the City of Victorville. The case number and name of parties is on the agenda. We had a sister companion item to that for the City Council, the same existing litigation. Again, the case numbers and parties are set forth on the agenda. We had real property negotiations pursuant to government code 5495-6.8. The parties, negotiating parties, and the parcels are set forth on the agenda. We also had Public Employee Performance Evaluation pertaining to the City Manager position pursuant to government code 5495-7B. And in addition to that, we had a added urgency item pursuant to government code 5495-4.2B2, which was anticipated litigation pursuant to government code 5495-6.9D4. Necessary proclamations regarding that was set forth at the five o'clock meeting, and at this point, there is no reportable action with respect to any of those items.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. At this time, we're going to have the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. The invocation is to be delivered by Reverend Patrick Travers. If you would come up, then we will stand for the invocation, and if you remain standing after the invocation, we will have the pledge led by Police Chief Sam Lucia.
As power heads in prayer. Thank you, dear Lord, on behalf of all who are gathered here this evening. It's a blessing to be at this council meeting, participate in the freedom to meet and assemble within our government. We pray for our mayor and for our city government in particular for their work in guiding our community, most importantly, helping them remain aware of the welfare needs of our city while promoting peace, order, and justice, and the wisdom to govern without conflicting interests and issues, prejudice, or bias. Grant them the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, giving each of them a personal peace in their lives and joy in the tasks set before them. Give them the gift of discernment, to take nothing for granted, and if our city is ever confronted or threatened with terrorism, as witnessed in Paris, give them the courage and the foresight to govern through the chaos, out of the abyss, and into the light. We pray for the agenda that will be discussed and the assurance that those who will benefit from the decisions made here tonight are what would please you. Let us not forget, many of us have been, let us not forget how much all of us have been thankful for this Thanksgiving season, and bow in gratitude for your greatness and love for us. Amen.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, where liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend Travers. Thank you, Sam. At the present time on the agenda, we have presentations. None have been scheduled. We do not have any. We will move on to the regular agenda. I'd ask the City Clerk to present the agenda, please.
The City Council of the City of Victorville welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. Persons who wish to address the council on a specific item or any item that does not appear on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards located in the council chambers lobby and give it to the City Clerk prior to the meeting. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card. Pursuant to government code section 54954.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less as deemed necessary by the mayor. Communications are to be addressed directly to the City Council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Any individual group who engages in disruptive conduct during the meeting will be removed from the chambers by order of the mayor. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the council, and there is one addition to tonight's agenda that has been distributed to the council and has been made available to the public. This is on item D1. It's a revised staff report correcting the agreement terms from one year with two one-year extensions to eighteen months with two one-year extensions. Those are all the revisions I have, Mayor Protem Cox.
Thank you. We do not have any appeal hearings, and our first item is item B1 on the agenda, which is a public hearing. And, before we start, I noticed on my staff reports attached is Mr. Hernandez's application for the City Council review, and it wasn't attached. It's not something we need to, is it, staff? At least I didn't get it. I don't know if the other councilman did.
The resolution that is part of the item would contain the pertinent information for this.
That contains all the information we need.
Yes, it would.
Only for the record, because it said it was attached, and if it's not, somebody would say, "Why?" Okay, it's not needed. The pertinent information is in the resolution. Are there any questions in regard to this item before I open the hearing? Any comments from the staff? If they are pleased after the hearing, I'm going to open the public hearing. And Mr. Edgar Hernandez, owner of Rocky Rowley Limousine Service, you may or may not speak. If you have anything to say, you can do so at this time. Is that individual here? Okay, he doesn't have nothing to add? Okay, all right. He's the only individual that's indicated an interest. I'm going to close the public hearing, the council members. We have a resolution? Nope, we're waiting for a motion and a second for the adoption of Resolution 15073.
Motion by Mr. McEckren, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries with Mayor Garcia absent.
Next item on the agenda is the consent calendar, consent calendar, I'm sorry. Item C1 through C16. Is there any reason to pull any of those items from the agenda? For discussion? Any questions? If not, chair is open for a motion to approve, to approve the consent agenda, consent calendar.
They'll move. Second.
A motion and a second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. McEckren. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries with Mayor Garcia absent.
The next item is underwritten communications, D on the agenda, item D1. Item D1 is a on-call engineering plan and map checking services. There was one correction that staff looked at. Whether or not it was two years, one years, eighteen months, was that corrected?
Yes, Mr. Mayor Protem, there is a revision on the dais right now that corrects the staff report to indicate it's an eighteen-month contract with two one-year extensions. Matches the contract language attached.
Okay. Are there any questions from the council members? Then we open for a motion?
Approval? Second.
Motion by Mr. McEckren, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries with Mayor Garcia absent.
D2 is bid proposal for traffic signal cabinets for Mariposa Road, Bear Valley Road, and Amargosa Road, Bear Valley Road. Any additions from the staff? Any questions from the council?
No additions.
Question, Brian? If memory serves me correctly, I know that we, at some point in the past, adopted a resolution or awarded a contract to look at signal synchronization along Bear Valley Road. Yet, when I drive on Bear Valley Road on the weekends, I'm confused by the continual inaccuracy of those signals between Mariposa and Amargosa going over the I-15. What is being done to correct that situation?
Well, we're not done yet. We've actually partially implemented a new timing plan. We hired Al Grover and Associates to do that for the synchronization of the signals along the whole Bear Valley Road stretch. We're not quite done yet, so the implementation is going to take longer to work out all the tweaks in this. What we did is we actually changed the timing in a number of signals, and it's not all completed yet, right at the Mariposa intersection, so we're still working on that. So, you're not going to see the full benefit of it yet.
When do you expect that that'll occur?
I don't know, but I would expect within a month.
Good question.
Yeah, I just, I know that we had done something along those lines. That was the purpose of it, and I keep driving along Bear Valley Road, and I don't see the results of it, so I'm just curious as to when it was going to happen. So, glad to hear that that'll happen, hopefully, within the next month. Thank you.
And I'll check, and I'll...
All right.
I'll let you know.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. The request from the staff then is additional appropriation of $39,402 for these cabinets. Do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Need a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. McEckren, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries with Mayor Garcia absent.
Item three is also submitted by Mr. Gangler, the city engineer, awarded contract to Fuel Solutions, Inc. in the amount of $139,256 for consulting services for the proposed Foxborough CNG station. Are there any questions of the staff? Additional information? If not, ready for motion?
Nothing additional.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. McEckren. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries with Mayor Garcia absent.
Item five, presentation of request to approve the piggyback purchase of case equipment 580SN backhoe loader in the amount of $122,437.31. What's the difference between a backhoe and a backhoe loader? Is this a carrier? What is it?
I'm for Mr. Matthews. I always have the same questions, actually, and I don't want to get it wrong, so I'll ask Doug to explain it. We had a wheel loader come up about a couple of weeks ago.
Explain again, a piggyback purchase?
Piggyback purchase is where we haven't gone through our own purchasing process. There's been one performed by a government agency that was suitable for our needs. Saves us a lot of time.
Yeah, this is just the buckets that are on it. It'll look like your standard backhoe that you see out there. The one you had last week was a, or the last council meeting was a landscape loader, and it has a completely different drag on the back, but this is your typical, just basic backhoe. It's got a front bucket.
Okay. Well, I noticed the age of the one it's replacing, and I'm surprised it lasted that long, so, since 1970?
Mm-hmm.
You're using it?
Yeah, and basically, it's emission standards that are forcing a lot of these purchases. There's backup documentation showing what our replacement schedule that's been dictated by the state is. It's kind of a moving target as we go, but it's just showing you how many pieces of equipment are going to be timed out.
Okay. Any further questions from council?
Mayor Protem, for the record, you mentioned this was item five. It's actually item four.
What did I do? I said five?
Yes.
No, it's item four. Sorry about that mistake I just made.
A move approval? Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. McEckren. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries with Mayor Garcia absent.
Now, on item five. Again, from Mr. Gangler, this is a map of bikeway project by year project preliminary cost estimates. The request is the City Council approve the bikeway project five-year plan and receive and file the report. So, are there any questions?
Mayor Protem, there is a brief presentation. I think it'll be a lot more informational than the black and white photocopy that's in your agenda item.
Okay.
Colored maps that Brian's going to walk through each fiscal year of the bikeway plans that we have.
Thank you. I'm waiting for the map to come up. What you see up there is the first fiscal year of a five-year plan to not just install bikeways. It's mainly bike lanes. It'd be striped paint along the roadway for bike lanes. But it's actually, most of it is road rehabilitation projects. There are streets that need to be fixed anyway, but while doing so, we're incorporating bike lanes into those streets. So, it's mainly a pavement rehabilitation plan, and it's consistent with our five-year measure I plan. But we're leveraging some of the measure I funds with the LTF funds, local transportation funds, which can only be used for certain things such as bikes, pedestrians, transit, and so forth. So, I just wanted to get that point across, because I know some people may have a perception that we're just putting in bike lanes, but it's mainly a street rehabilitation project. So, what you see up there, the first year, and you'll see these in pieces, and it may not make a lot of sense until you see the whole plan put together. The first year, La Mesa Road, that's in this fiscal year, will be rehabilitating La Mesa Road. And Hesperia Road was already rehabilitated in a previous year, and then we would have bike lanes that would connect along there in Esqually and La Mesa. And then if I could see the next year, the next year would be Amethyst Road, which was already a priority project that council approved for street rehabilitation. And then along the Phantom Loop and Air Expressway. Now, the Phantom is already in good condition. Not a lot is needed there except the salery seal. And Air Expressway would need to have some shoulders there for bike lanes. And if I could have the next year, the next year, that actually, what you see is the Mojave Riverwalk project where you receive grant funds, about $3.76 million in ATP funds. And it'd be building a new path along the levee on the river on Yates Road, a spur into the Mojave Narrows Regional Park, and then a loop along Green Tree, Seventh, and Hesperia Road, and then going through Old Town back to the river again. So, that's primarily a grant-funded project with some LTF funds matching. Then if I could see the next layer, then, so on this layer, you have Elvato and Mojave Drive. Both of those are in need of pavement rehabilitation. And there would be some widening on both of those streets for shoulders for bike lanes. Much of Mojave Drive is already wide enough. And if I could see the next year, so you see Village Drive, that's obviously in need of street rehabilitation. That's been on the books for some time. And then connecting on it would be Hopland Road and a short stretch of Yanada to connect back. And then if I could see the next year. Is that it? No, there's a, there's just a little segment there along Balsam. Balsam is in need of street rehabilitation, too. So, that's the five-year plan. I did leave out a little piece. I forgot about it at the very beginning, and that's down on Bear Valley Road by the river. It's going from basically Fitch Hatchery to Jackaranda, and the City Council already approved some matching funds for that. That's an Apple Valley project that's going to be going to construction soon. So, that's basically the bike plan, and I'm available for any questions. I have a quick question.
Brian, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you. Maybe it's for Doug. When was this bike plan first brought up, or was this from the previous council, or...
It's kind of been in the idea stage as a total plan. This is really the first time that the council has seen it. There's been discussions about as we repair these roads and rebuild these roads, adding bike lanes to them, which actually allows us to use that LTF money that can't be used for road repair typically. It allows us to use it to repair the bike lane section of the roadway and extend those road dollars further. So, if fifteen percent of these roads, roughly fifteen to twenty percent is bike lanes, we can actually use that LTF money to pave a road and stripe it.
Thank you. My follow-up question is, for example, Amethyst Road, I thought was in the plan to fix. Does this take care of that, or is it...
It does. In fact, the timing is based on that. We don't want to put stripes down on a road that needs to be reconstructed because the cyclist probably wouldn't want to ride on it anyway. We would time it such that as we're reconstructing it, we can leverage those LTF funds to assist.
I got it. Thanks, Brian. I think what you said earlier about this isn't just bike lanes, I think that's really important.
Yeah, the concept behind it was to create kind of two loops, one on each side, east side, west side of the city, and then connect them in a couple of spots. That if you wanted to ride a big circle around the city, you could do that. If you wanted to do a shorter piece just on your side of the city, you can do that. And then additionally, we tried to connect the bike lanes to job centers such as SCLA. That way, with, you know, two thousand some employees out there, we have a way to get them out there should they choose to ride a bike to work.
Brian, these are some of the most congested streets we have. I mean, obviously, Palmdale Road and Bear Valley Road aren't on the, and some fairly high-speed streets. Does that give us any concern about putting bike lanes on congested, high-volume, high-speed traffic streets?
There always can be some concern about that. The, I think, the problem with our city is the way the streets are laid out. There aren't a lot of continuous roads that cross the interstate. And so, to have a access, a backbone access to get all the way across, you're somewhat limited on the roads that you choose. We don't plan on putting any bike lanes on Bear Valley Road except to cross over the railroad tracks, because there's no other way to get across. But Hesperia actually has a project called the bypass project that would run parallel... But Asperry actually has a project called the bypass project that would run parallel to Bear Valley Road. But I understand your concern, it's just that our options are somewhat limited on where to put bike lanes for continuous roads that go from one part of the city to another.
Yeah, and I'm, they have bike lanes in New York City, and I can't think of a more congested. Do they have lanes, or do they just ride bikes in the middle of traffic, do you know?
I think both.
Yeah, they do have both.
The other thing we had was, we all know we got an email from one of our citizens who objected to spending street money on bike lanes. He'd rather see us spend it on the streets. I'm sure most of us here would agree with that if, if we could. Could you touch on that subject?
Well, in essence, what you see before you is a street rehabilitation project, that's what it is. It's just that we're incorporating bike lanes into the street project as we're doing it. We're not, none of these projects are solely putting in bike lanes, they're all street rehabilitation projects.
And it's actually quite the opposite of what the emailer said. We're using bike lane money to help repave a street that needs to be repaved.
Yeah, we, we couldn't use that money otherwise for anything other than...
No, it's actually some of Brian's creativity to work that into the street rehabilitation plan and bring those projects sooner than they would otherwise have been brought, had we not used the bike lane money.
It's probably stretching our street maintenance dollars by fifteen to twenty percent. Thank you.
Move approval?
Okay, we have a motion to receive and file. You got a second?
Second.
All those in the papers say aye.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. McEckern, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Mayor Garcia, the motion carries with Mayor Garcia absent.
Thank you. Agenda item number six, presentation of request to approve the piggyback purchase of a John Deere Wheel Loader, five forty-four K in the amount of two hundred, one thousand, one hundred, three dollars and forty-six cents.
Move for approval? Second.
Motion by Mr. McEckern, second by Mr. Kennedy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries with Mayor Garcia absent.
Looking at all of my cards here, and I think every one of them are on item seven, but I got to make sure. Because that is the next item, so just bear with me one second, please. The next item that is on the city council, the subject is Resolution Number fifteen-dash-zero-seven-four, entitled, "Resolution of the City Council of the City Victorville, California, in support of the California Minerals Off-Road Recreation and Conservation Act." Before I open this up for the individuals to talk, I'd ask that Mr. Robertson provide a short explanation on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Councilman McCook asked me to place this item on the agenda, and I don't know if he has any comments on it. I do know that a member of Congressman Cook's staff, Dakota Higgins, is here to give a brief presentation, I believe involves a short PowerPoint. Your pleasure, if you want to take that before or after the comments.
Do you have a representative from Congressman Cook's office to give a PowerPoint? Are you prepared to do that, sir? Would you come up, please? If you would introduce yourself.
Thank you, council members. My name is Dakota Higgins, I'm a field representative for Congressman Paul Cook, and I'm here today to present on H R thirty-six sixty-eight, the California Minerals Off-Road Recreation and Conservation Act. Okay, I'll try to keep this very brief. The California Minerals Off-Road Recreation and Conservation Act, we call it C-Morca, it was introduced on October first, twenty fifteen. It designates the Mojave Trails Special Management Area, establishes the Sea and the Snow National Monument Area, creates six national OHV areas totaling over three hundred thousand acres, designate seventy-seven miles of wild and scenic rivers, and designates three hundred thousand acres of new wilderness, which is already wilderness study areas, while releasing an additional one hundred and fifty thousand acres of wilderness study area. That's the, the broad strokes of the bill. This is a map, I, I really don't expect you to be able to read all of the little parts, but if you look up in the, the center-right portion, you can see the Mojave Trails Special Management Area, right south of the Mojave National Preserve, kind of straddling I-40. The Mojave Trails Special Management Area designates nine hundred and sixty-five thousand acres. It provides protection for existing mining claims and allows for new claims on up to ten percent of the total acreage of the special management area. That's ninety-six thousand acres. To give you, to put that into perspective, in San Bernardino County, across countywide, there's currently approximately forty-eight, forty-nine thousand acres of, of mining permitted. It also explicitly designates twelve hundred miles of OHV roads and trails throughout the special management area, and includes no net loss language to ensure that these OHV routes are kept open for future, from future closures. There's a map of the special management area. The Santa Snow National Monument is a hundred and forty thousand acres. Essentially, it sits in between the San Bernardino National Forest and Joshua Tree National Park. And there's a map of the Santa Snow National Monument. The OHV provisions, like I mentioned before, it creates six national OHV areas, Spangler Hills, El Mirage, Stoddard Valley, Razor, Dumont Dunes, and Johnson Valley, and again, designates twelve hundred miles of OHV trails and the Mojave Trails Special Management Area. Now, the Antiquities Act is something that I'm sure the council is aware of, there's been a lot of talk about this over the past few months. The Antiquities Act authorizes the President of the United States to protect landmarks, structures, and objects of historic or scientific interest by designating them as national monuments through executive order. Essentially, there, there's no check on that power. It was passed in nineteen oh six by Congress, and has been used by, I believe, eight Republicans and eight Democrats over the intervening hundred years. In August, Senator Feinstein wrote a letter to President Obama requesting that he use the Antiquities Act to designate three national monuments. The Mojave Trails National Monument, which is where our Mojave Trails Special Management Area would be, the Santa Snow National Monument, which we include in our legislation, and the Castle Mountains, which is in between the Mojave National Preserve and the Nevada border. Congressman Cook obviously opposes any such Antiquities Act designation, I'd like to emphasize that point. He believes that with so many acres, this is millions of acres of public land, that an executive designation is simply, you know, not feasible. It, it doesn't give, you know, the people's representatives a chance to push their legislation through Congress, and quite frankly, it prevents certain stakeholders from having a seat at the table. So our legislation, Congressman Cook's legislation, includes language prohibiting the Antiquities Act designations in the special management area, in the Castle Mountains, and in any of the national OHV areas that are proposed in our bill. This language has been used twice before. There's been a lot of talk that this will be a dangerous precedent, that this will destroy the executive power of the presidency. Will President Harry Truman sign legislation that transform the Grand Teton National Monument into a national park in exchange for a ban on Antiquities Act designations in the state of Wyoming? And the Alaska National Interest Lands Conservation Act, which was signed by President Carter, also Democrat, preventing Antiquities Act designations larger than five thousand acres in the state of Alaska. So this has been used before. Finally, I'd like to close very briefly on some myths. We've, you know, encountered some folks who might not be totally informed on our bill, so I'd like to run through a few of the misconceptions that we're working to combat. One of the biggest claims is that our legislation opens the desert to more large-scale mining projects, which will, you know, the claim goes, destroy the environment or damage the environment. Quite frankly, all of the lands out there are open to the public for mining right now, you just have to go through the existing BLM NEPA process. So our legislation, with the limits, would ensure that at least eight hundred and seventy thousand acres is protected from future mining. Furthermore, it would protect the Cattellus lands, which were privately acquired lands that were purchased for conservation purposes. They total roughly a hundred and eighty thousand acres. That is not part of the ten percent, and our bill would explicitly designate them as protected from future mining. Furthermore, there's been some talk that our bill in some way violates the Endangered Species Act, the Clean Air Act, or the Clean Water Act. The Endangered Species Act, the only segment of our bill that refers to that is to expedite the permitting of the repair of trestle bridges along Route sixty-six. I think I saw Jim Conkle here earlier, you know, Mr. Route sixty-six, and he'll tell you how, how beautiful Route sixty-six is, and, you know, how you can see these beautiful desert vistas from Route sixty-six. It's one of the only untouched areas of the original Route sixty-six in the nation. And we believe that when people go out there to view those beautiful areas, they should be safe driving along there. These bridges haven't been repaired in, you know, twenty, thirty years, and we believe that that maintenance is long overdue. The Clean Air Act, we, our bill is identical to Senator Feinstein's, we don't really violate the Clean Air Act, I'm not sure where that came from, but I have heard it. And the Clean Water Act, we have no language relating to the Clean Water Act at all. So with that, our bill is going to get a hearing most likely in early December. We're confident that our bill will move through the Natural Resources Committee in the, in the House, and Congressman Cook is fully committed to moving his legislation. When he introduces something, he takes care of it, he pushes it forward, and is willing to fight for this bill both in committee and on the floor. Last but not least, I'd definitely like to emphasize once again that Congressman Cook is committed to finding a legislative solution. He does not believe that the Antiquities Act should be used. And quite frankly, the, the language we use to prohibit Antiquities Act designation in the future, he believes is extremely fair, because if our legislation and Senator Feinstein's move through the committee and go to conference, and, you know, Congressman Cook sits down with Senator Feinstein, and a compromise is made, and it's signed by the president, then everyone has had their voice heard, has had their seat at the table, and there's no need to designate these lands through executive powers going behind the will of the people. So with that, if you have any other questions, you know, you can always contact our district office, we have multiple field reps in the community. You can visit our website for any of the maps, and I will open it up to any questions council may have.
Any questions, council members? Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
At this time, I'm going to call the names of individuals who want to speak on this in the order that I receive the cards. The first is Romano Ortiz.
Thank you for, for this day to accept to, people come to talking by some things, you know. I am pastor, Romano Ortiz, I preach here in Pacoima, and here too in Victorville, and I represent like three hundred, four hundred pastors here in high desert. I know he's not here right now, but I can be by talking by the D seven. I know a lot of people, guys, support to the minerals and recreation, but I talking for me and for my people in the church, I see a lot of times when the people come with me and to the places, I see reconciliation with peoples, I see like miracles, or the people feeling like, like touch his spirit with his soul in the places, and I see young people enjoy. When I go with my son and my daughter, my family, I enjoy a lot of times to the places, you know? And I think if you, the places disappears in the future, I don't know what's going, what happened, because I have a lot of memories with my son. Every year, I come with my son and my daughter to enjoy the, the places, and I have a lot of memories. And a lot of people have a lot of memories with going to places, and then what's going in the future, not only in the people, what's going with the animals, what's going with the rivers, with the guarder, or the Joshua tree, eagles, a lot of animals is beautiful there, and if that species disappears, what's going? Sometimes I think people need to make a question, everybody need to do the question, what is better for us? What is better for the world? What is better for God? What is better for everybody, you know? If you disappear the places, or make to save, and try to save in the places, or everybody, you know? For, for respect to God, for respect to the animals?
You have thirty seconds.
Yeah? Oh, yeah, thank you. And well, but the thing is, I have a lot of memories, and I think it's, it's good to save in the places, and thank you for listening to me, for taking this opportunity to say something.
I do want to say that these are very complicated issues, and we know from the correspondence from both Congressman Cook's office and Senator Feinstein's office, that they have their information on the website, they have a way to contact them, and they have field reps, representatives, that will answer questions specifically to the act that we have in front of us and the other act that has been talked about in conjunction with this. We probably can't answer those, but if you have questions, they will be more willing to discuss it with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next individual, Rachel, I can't pronounce it, Kenakoli? Ah, I did pronounce it.
Hi. I don't like microphones. My name's Rachel Kenakoli, I'm actually a resident here in Victorville. Do we have two minutes? Three? Okay. So I'm here because, obviously, so we are here to ask that either the council supports both bills, or doesn't support any at all. So we do, there was a couple of points I want to address, so like with the, with the presentation that we had, it's important to know that the Antiquities Act was only an option looked at within the past year or two. The bill has been tried to push through Congress, and it was stagnant, which is why Feinstein started looking at it. That wasn't the first way that she wanted to go. She said at her hearing in Whitewater multiple times, she wanted to go through the legislative process. It's just Congress is slow. So that's one point. And so the thing, I think for me personally, my issue with the C-Morca is the Mojave Trails. A national monument is what's most important here to Victorville. Mojave Trails is the place that affects the city the most, because Route sixty-six runs directly through here. And I think it's important that we think about that, think about the benefits of tourism, think about the benefits of essentially giving the city a culture, giving it a history, reminding people what Route sixty-six is about. I got to go to Amboy last week, so I drove down Route sixty-six. I totally know what you mean about it not being repaired, but I think one of the reasons it's not repaired is because people don't care about it, they don't see it as what it was. If there was a national monument on Route sixty-six, I'm sure that street's going to be repaired. I'm sure there's going to be, you know, ways for people to get there. And there's a history, just in Amboy alone, I mean, that was like, I was learning about it, it used to be one of the biggest spots, like, on Route sixty-six, it was open twenty-four hours, so there are things there that need to be protected, and I think if the council takes a position now on this bill, or on Senator Cook's bill, or on Representative Cook's bill, it's going to hurt that potential to merge the bills together in the legislative process. It's important that they can be merged together, there are compromises that can be made, but for me, I don't want a special management area. I don't see that as helping our city, as bringing, you know, more economy, more tourism to our city. That's kind of, you know, the crux of what our city is. And so I think, I think that's kind of where I stand, it's either support both...
You have thirty seconds.
Oh, yeah, so either support both or don't support any. Be neutral, let the process work out, let more people know about it, hear about it, and weigh in, and then see what we can do.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, my name is Carol Wiley. I would like to urge you to not endorse the Cook bill this evening. As you know, there are two bills for management of the Mojave Desert, and it appears that the Cook bill is not the best for the desert, and I do have some issues with it. However, as these bills move through the process, some of the difficulties can be resolved. That is why I, as a longtime resident who does love this desert, is asking you not to endorse Congressman Cook's bill, and let the process, the issues be resolved and facts be presented before any decision is made. Please remain neutral until there is adequate information on these bills. As the last, as the first gentleman expressed, that the desert is important to him, this desert is important to, to many people for various reasons. So the issues are very important and deserves much consideration, not a quick judgment. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Jim Conkel? And following Mr. Conkel, Mariana McGuire, you can get ready.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, fellow council members, city staff, citizens of Victorville. I've been honored to be in front of this board many times and over the years and your predecessors. And I'm here today to represent Route 66, although I am representing the Mother Road Mojave Trails National Monument. And I'm not asking you to not support Congressman Cook's bill. I'm asking you to give equal support to Senator Feinstein's bill. I've worked on this bill for eight years, and I have seen it evolve into where it is today. I've had a great input into it, and I urge you to take a stand that says you support the protection of the Mother Road and the Mojave Trails, the entire desert. Some people see that desert as a vast wasteland. I see it as an ocean without water. There's a lot out there, and I know some of you have gone out there and enjoyed that desert. Some of you go out there and work in it, in it. So I'm urging you to not, to not support one, but to not ignore another one. I give tours, and I've never had anybody from around the world ask me to come and see a special management district. They come to see national parks and national monuments, and I'd like to see the Mojave Desert become a national monument. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Adriana?
My name is Mariana McGuire, and I am with the Campaign for the California Desert, which is a coalition of desert advocates. And I'm here tonight to ask you all to consider, please, remaining neutral on Representative Cook's bill. This council remain neutral on Senator Feinstein's bill. And as others have said, we believe that one of the best things that you can do is to maintain that balance, maintain neutrality on both, so that they have an equal and fair opportunity to move through Congress. Senator, apologize, Representative Cook's staff earlier did concede that the bills need to go to conference so that they can be merged. And that means that they need to move forward through their respective houses together. We would like, and I know that the representative and the senator would like to see that happen. The best way to make that happen is for both bills to move and to make sure that they have a clear path to do so. So supporting both or remaining neutral on both is one of those ways that we can ensure that that happens. But taking a position on only one and not the other would potentially create conflict, potentially create imbalance that would hurt that process. So I urge you again tonight to maintain your neutrality on this bill as you did for the CDC RA, Senator Feinstein's bill, and perhaps instead consider writing to the senator and the representative and urging them to work together, urging them to urge Congress to move these bills forward and to bring them to conference so that the proper balance can be found through the legislative process. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seth, I'm not going to try to pronounce your last name, but if you would tell us how it's pronounced, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. Good evening, city council members and Mr. Mayor. My name is Seth Steyer. I'm with the National Parks Conservation Association. I'd like to request that you not endorse Mr. Cook's bill tonight, and/or either you endorse both bills and let them work out through the legislative process. I think my, my position is this because I think there are really substantive flaws in the Cook bill. We heard an assertion earlier on that there was not new mining opened in the special management area, and that may be true compared to the current status. But when you compare a special management area with a national monument, it's actually very different, and it does open about 100,000 acres more of mining than a national monument would. Mojave Trails is really a special place. It's the connective tissue in the California desert for wildlife moving between Joshua Tree National Park, the Air Ground Combat Center for the Marines, and the Mojave National Preserve. It's also historic Route 66, the Mother Road, and each year as I drive up there, I run into busloads of Germans stopping in Amboy. So the bottom line is, we know that a national monument designation will raise the profile of the California desert as a destination for tourism, and I think that's what we all want. And what we've seen in my field with the national parks is we've seen increases in tourism, increase in tourism spending, increase in job creation. For example, we had about 3 million recreational visits to our three desert national park units here in San Bernardino County. Those 3 million visitors spent 190 million, that's a million with an M, in communities surrounding the parks and supported over 2,000 full and part-time jobs in the region. So parks and monuments are powerful economic engines, not so much with special management I also wanted to say something about the process for both bills. It's been vastly different, and Mr. Cook has made a good faith effort in introducing his legislation, but I don't believe the type of vetting has, proper vetting has been done, and it's reflected in the current number of endorsers on it. You know, the number of endorsers who endorse
30 seconds.
The Mojave National Trails, Mojave Trails National Monument included chambers of commerce, Native American tribes, energy companies, businesses, and elected officials around the desert. That's not so with the special management area. Please don't endorse the Cook bill tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Seth. Next speaker is Matthew Jatauski.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, and good evening, other members of the council. It's an honor to be here. I am the California Desert Representative for the Wilderness Society. I live in Joshua Tree, but I'm going to take that hat off. Well, they never gave me a hat, but I'm going to take it off anyway and put my flat hat back on, because I spent quite a few years in Mojave National Preserve as an interpretive park ranger. Interpreters connect people to things. We connect them to heritage, we connect them to natural resources, to animals, to geology. When I look at Route 66 and Victorville, I see connections between Victorville and Barstow and Needles, and I see potential. And I see opportunity. And that Mojave Trails National Monument will help make those opportunities a reality. That's the only point I wanted to make on Representative Cook's bill, and I applaud Representative Cook for working so diligently on the bill. There's much to liken it, but as with the special management area, the concessions to mining and other issues, my organization's not going to be able to support it. But what we would like to see happen, and what Senator Feinstein has stated repeatedly she'd like to see happen, is the legislative solution. It has not moved. But perhaps with the support of local elected officials such as yourselves, encouraging that process of coming together of those two bills, we can come up with something that this entire desert will be able to support. Because right now, we're too far apart. And that's really all I wanted to say to you. I understand you didn't support the California Desert Conservation Recreation Act, and I understand issues with antiquities. I don't agree with them, but I understand them. But leaving Simorka alone, staying neutral, or even supporting both, send them a letter, both of them, encouraging them to work together on this, I'm fine with that. But don't just go it alone on Simorka. It's not a complete thing. By the way, those German tourists who I have much experience with, they come in the middle of the summer. I can't figure it out. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. Kevin Chang?
Hello, my name is Kevin Chang, and I'm Senator Feinstein's field representative. I'll keep my remarks brief because I know that I've met with many of you guys in the past, so I don't want to keep you guys too long. Basically, when I, what I wanted to do coming here today is let you know that I want to say that Senator Feinstein's office, we and Senator Feinstein herself, is always open to discussing this with local electeds. That's very important for the senator, that the community be involved. So without, with that being said, I just want to say that for us, I'm here in the capacity to represent Senator Feinstein's bill. I think Mr. Higgins did a great job of representing his boss in presenting the congressman's bill, but I just wanted to let you know that any questions you might have regarding the differences, that's what I'm here for, to kind of speak on that. Both bills are very extensive. There's numerous independent reports that'll say, you know, it supports one thing or another. But I just wanted to be sure that you guys were in the loop and informed about everything. I just wanted to point out a couple of things. Obviously, the community has spoken about the differences between the special management area and our proposed monument area. I think the senator, of course, wants legislation to move forward, and she also did request the president use the Antiquities Act to look into proposing these monuments. To say that these haven't been vetted or going through the Antiquities Act isn't vetting is something that I think is a misconception. This bill, as you all know, you guys met with my predecessor, me, in the senator's office for about 10 years, and she reintroduced this bill three times. So this is something that's been out for six years. So that, with that being said, all the stakeholders definitely have come to the table and, you know, talked about boundaries, what, you know, recreational usage should be existed in the monuments. So to say that the Antiquities Act isn't, you know, putting it, allowing any public process, that I think is a misnomer. Secondly, we also had a public comment hearing, which you guys, I'm sure were aware of, that, you know, the community came out for about four hours in 97-degree weather, about 1,000 attendees, to kind of speak on this. So I believe that while the intentions of the congressman is to move forward with legislation, and that is a priority of the senators to get the remaining pieces, that would be left out through the antiquities designation, is important to say that the Antiquities Act does not allow for public process is something that I think should be addressed.
You have 30 seconds.
But I guess, long story short, I would love to continue talking to you about this. The senator's door is always open, and that's what I'm here for as well. Thank you.
Kevin, thank you. That's the last card that I have on this item, so I'm going to bring this back to the city council for discussion. Council members.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Cox, and I'd like to thank representatives from Senator Feinstein's office, Representative Cook's office, and as always Supervisor Lovinggood's office. And it's always good to see Jim Conkel visit, so I had the pleasure of meeting him. And I, I just want to ensure people understand that I have a lot of experience working out in the desert. Matter of fact, conservation, Catalislands, desert wildlife management areas, working with BLM and Department of Interior, something I've been doing the last eight years. And, and as you're working through a lot of these issues, I don't think this is an either-or conversation. But when you use terms like the Antiquities Act, you know, there is, there's quite a bit going on out there, and we do have quite a bit of conservation activities already going on in the Mojave Desert. But I think overall, what we do support is the legislative process as any of the issues that come up in our own city. Every time something comes up, if it's possible for two parties to negotiate, obviously that works out for everyone. Unfortunately, things do get bogged down sometimes, but certainly, there, again, this, to me anyway, is not an either-or decision. I think what, what is outlined in both pieces of legislation, I think we're pretty close from what I've seen. I, you know, I understand that there's work to do, but somebody I talked to had mentioned that, that there is further negotiation that needs to occur, and I don't think that's going to happen here tonight in this particular forum. So anyway, regardless, I appreciate everyone's input, but certainly, I believe the stakeholders involved are, are probably need to get together, and I'd, I'd support a letter stating that we would encourage both parties to, to get together. I mean, quite frankly, what I'm worried about right now is the Yucaloma Bridge extension, and we have a lot of other issues, but this doesn't seem particularly a city issue for me right now.
Thank you, council member Negrete. Council member Kennedy?
Well, I'll tell you, this issue has absolutely nothing to do with my love of the national park system, and I can say that with great conviction. My wife and I have visited somewhere in the neighborhood of 140 national parks, monuments, wilderness areas, seashores, you name it. We've got about 200 to go, and I think we'll get them all. But that's not what we're here tonight. The question is whether or not the city of Victorville ought to get involved in this, what do we call it? What's a delicate term for what's going on in Washington? A urinary emission contest. And, and I don't see any reason for the city of Victorville to get involved, frankly. We didn't support, I didn't take an active support for Senator Feinstein's bill. We didn't, I see no reason to take active support for this one. I don't think it has a direct impact on the city of Victorville. It's a, I don't see us gaining anything, and I think all we're going to do is make enemies. So my preference is that we disengage from this entire debate. Let them resolve it in Washington.
Thank you. Council member McKecklin?
Yes, I had asked Doug that we put this on the agenda, and as much as I agree with Council member Kennedy that we ought to let them resolve it in Washington, for whatever reason, that's not likely to happen. I have, I've been involved in meetings with Senator Feinstein and her staff, as well as Congressman Cook and, and his staff, and it just doesn't seem that the, the two parties are likely to come together. From my perspective, obviously, all politics becomes local, and, and I think we ought to be supportive of our congressman. As much as I would like to see the two parties work together, I've got a lot of people that I've met with over the last six years on Senator Feinstein's bill, I, I just don't see it happening. And I've shared, I shared that earlier today with, with those folks, because I'm personally, I've personally been in the room with both representatives, both Senator Feinstein and Congressman Cook, and I don't see that, that it, it's going to work, work itself out. The reality is, is that, you know, our congressman, our representative, is the person that we, we go to for most issues that we have to deal with. I agree with Council member Negrete with respect to Yucaloma and the Green Tree extension. We were hopeful that we might secure a tiger grant. We even had Senator Feinstein's support. I personally asked her in her conference room to make a call. But regardless of all of that, we still didn't get, get the tiger grant. So now I'm left struggling with how do we go about securing those funds? At the end of the day, whatever path this has to take forward, you know, we've got to figure out a, a way to, to build that road. But, you know, I'm, I'm supportive of Congressman Cook. I'd like to see the two parties work, work, work together and work through those issues. But I'm not as optimistic. I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I won't call it what you called it, but the reality is, well, no, yeah, it is, it is what it is. The reality is, is that we sit here and sometimes what goes on back in the Beltway is in a vacuum. And so it sometimes requires local government to step out and tell those folks in a public fashion from the dais, other than just meeting with them in their office, that this is what we want you to do. The reality is, is I would love for Senator Feinstein and Congressman Cook to work through this and come to consensus, but it's not a reality that I see happening. So from that perspective, regardless of whether or not the council signs off on supporting one or the other, or decides to stay neutral, I'm supportive of Congressman Cook's bill.
Thank you. We have heard a lot of good information. By the way, I agree with almost all the remarks of the council members. We have dealt with our congressman on local issues, been very helpful. We've dealt with our senator in the past on issues, been helpful. And I really, truly believe that if we take an action tonight, it almost has to be an action to support both and encourage action to support both and encourage them to work it out. We're not going to be able to influence what goes into the bill, what gets omitted, what gets amended, what gets added. And I think maybe we would lose our influence altogether if we oppose both or even included or endorse both. One of the things that we can do is to agree to further study this, agree to have more questions into both parties with answers, and if they fail to wake it out, work it out, then for the council to take a very strong position. I would think that a part of that position would be to also not only encourage them to work it out, but condemn that party that does not or refuses to work it out. This needs to be done for and on behalf of all the people in the high desert, and actually all the people who use the national parks and monuments and so forth. I really hate to see the city council take a position now. I think there's much more to be worked out. I'd rather see the council encourage them to work together, come to a solution, and fail you to do so, than we would put it back on the agenda and take an action. But we have four council members here. We're open for a motion and a second and a vote, and so, members of the council, it's your call.
Mr. Mayor Protem, at the risk of sticking my nose in and getting it cut off, I don't know how much time there is on either of these bills. One option that the council may want to consider, and this is me sticking my nose in where I shouldn't, is asking the Legislative Review Committee to take a look at both bills and provide a recommendation. This is a piece of legislation. When it was originally formed, it wasn't envisioned that they would review federal legislation. I don't know how quickly they could do it, but just wanted to toss it out there as an option for you to consider.
Councilmembers, you have a new option.
Well, I'll tell you, you know, because I was a proponent of the Legislative Committee being reformed, and I know we have three appointees, I believe Mayor Protem Cox is getting ready to appoint someone. I would, I'd be in favor of that. I think the other thing that I would say, and I don't disagree with Mayor Protem Cox on this issue, perhaps there is a little bit of time that ought to go by, based upon the comments that were shared here tonight. Maybe that carries some weight back there. I cautiously optimistic about that, but the reality is, is that, I mean, I can send letters, I can say whatever I want to say up here. Whether or not anything gets done in DC is a story, but I do believe that whenever we decide to either take a position of support or no support, or a position of neutrality, that it ought to include a full council. So from that perspective, I'd be fine for, to have the Legislative Review Committee take a look at this and then come back with a recommendation.
Councilmembers Kennedy and Councilmember Negretti.
I agree. Well, this, this, I don't think this is the kind of legislation anyone ever comprehended that the review committee would be involved. I don't care. It's up to you guys.
I think you're right. That committee, that committee was actually established to look at our own legislation, but we don't have full members of the council. They do have some time. Let them cut their teeth on this and see where we go. Okay? Mr. Attorney, do we need a motion for this, or the consensus of the council to refer to the Legislative Review Committee?
I think you have a consensus right now. You're not taking an action on the item which would require a motion, so you're essentially putting this, not really table, you're just deferring this until you get a report back from the Legislative Committee.
Okay. Thank you very much. So this matter will be referred to our newly formed Legislative Committee, Legislative Review Committee. We will not put this on the agenda every time, but it's not denied. It's still pending, and we'll place it back on the agenda at the appropriate time and have a decision or discussion at that time. Thank you very much for all your input. It's been very helpful, and hope, I hope the parties can work this out. Thank you. We are now at Item E, Public Comments. An item of interest, I have one card with three names. Jenny Liu, Joyce McCord, DeWitt. All three of you going to speak, or do you have a spokesman, spokesperson?
... May be together. Hi, councilmembers. My name is Jenny Liu.
I'm Joyce McCord.
We're student nurses from Azusa Pacific University here in the high desert region, and as we're in our community clinical rotation, we are exposed to and notice an abundance of the homeless population here in the high desert, and we're hoping to implement a project in collaboration with the Salvation Army, which we provided a flyer that gave a brief overview of what we're hoping to do. It's called the Project Mobile Shower, and what our hopes are to get a donated bus that can be transformed into a mobile shower bus that will be able to go out into the communities. And we noticed that some of the vulnerable population that we have here are unable to shower on a regular basis as they generally have no transportation to it or to those facilities that offer it, as in the state fairgrounds. It makes it hard for people to shower and also function appropriately in the society that we have. So with this project, we hope to come into various cities and locations to provide the showers for those who are unable to get to those facilities, and we come before you today in hopes that the city supports the project and asks if there are any oppositions or concerns before we proceed further with our project.
Thank you. You really do want to help us clean this place up, don't you?
We're trying to. We just, we see that, and I'm from Florida, so I see how in need that these people are.
Well, this is, I have the, I, we can't have a discussion because it's not on the agenda, but you do have the flyers, and you can be, feel free to distribute those, leave them in the back. And I'm sure you're going to be notifying the Daily Press in regard to this program, and thank you for appearing, and thank you for your words.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no more cards for members of the public and report from the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. At the risk of upsetting our new public information officer, this Friday, we have a groundbreaking for the Spring Valley Parkway Reconstruction Project at 11:00 a.m. Along the roadway there, you'll see it if you go. The actual construction is going to be delayed by a week because of Thanksgiving holidays. It'll actually start Monday, the 30th, but this was the day that was set aside to get everybody together to, I guess, have a little party. A little tiny party to promote that groundbreaking.
At 10:00 a.m.?
So, is it 10:00 a.m. or 7:00 a.m.? 11:00 a.m. 10:00 a.m. It is 10 o'clock in the morning. Sorry. 10 o'clock, in case you were listening to me earlier, I was wrong. It's 10 o'clock in the morning on Friday. We should be done by 11:00.
This coming Friday?
This coming Friday, yes. Yes. We wanted to have it before construction started, but we also didn't want to have it during Thanksgiving week, because a lot of people will be off. City will be open Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. So it is this Friday at 10:00 a.m. Another minor item, I just got a text. Mr. Metzler couldn't be here today. His daughter's AYSO soccer team that he coaches was in their championship game, happened to be taking place right now, and I just got a text that they won, so this is the second year in a row that they've been the champions. So congratulations, Keith.
Okay.
That concludes my report.
Thank you for the report. Report from councilmembers.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Protem Cox. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to all those folks who came out for Veterans Day. It was a fantastic day. If you haven't gone before, it's a great event. Saw a lot of great folks there. Specifically, I'd like to thank Colonel Jacoby from 11th ACYR at Fort Irwin, Major Kelsey Carnegie as well, for all the great work that they did supporting us on Veterans Day, and all the great folks that came out from Fort Irwin. Also, I'd like to thank our new PIO, Sue Johnson, and, Jones, I'm sorry. Sue Jones and Monica Peterson, who just did a tremendous job, and we really, I thought, put our best foot forward and had a great day. So again, if people hadn't been able to get out there, I would encourage them to next year.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Negretti. What's?
Just wanted to say one thing, Shay. I'm glad you're here tonight. As you know, we've had some, we've had some controversy at City Hall about a newspaper article that was published last week about overruns on the Niskwali Bridge project, and there was a lot of misinformation in that, and Sue Martin? Sue Jones. I called her Sue Martin in an email. I don't know where I came up with that, so.
You got her mixed up with Kathy Martin from Apple Valley.
I know. She's, she's been calling now four or five names. We're going to get it right. She's, she's working with the Daily Press, trying to iron those things out. The fact of that Niskwali Bridge, the widening of Niskwali was done seven or eight years earlier. It had nothing to do with the construction of the bridge. The original engineering estimates on that bridge came in at about $60 million. We built it for $40 million. The final contracts came in because the market drove that price down, frankly, and it was a great move. I'm sure we're going to get all of those facts sorted out, straightened out, and smoothed out, and the public will be properly informed. Thanks for your work on that, Sue.
Well, I was just going to mention Friday, but Doug already did that, so.
You probably would've got the time right, too.
Yes. It's at 10:00 a.m. instead of 11:00, and Sue, whatever your last name is, right? Thank you for all your hard work on that. I know it's baptism by fire, because all of a sudden you get in the position and boom, you've got something you got to do. But pulling that all together, getting all the different electeds there, along with the Spring Valley Lake Association, and of course, making sure that everybody knows out there that this is going to happen, because it's going to affect people's lives. You know, my stepdaughter goes to school at Excelsior. I know your, your kids go to school at Excelsior, so, I mean, you getting in and out of that school is going to be an interesting thing once they actually go to construction. But thank you for all your hard work and looking forward to breaking ground on Friday.
I have a comment in regard to the Niskwali overpass. I happen to have the honor of coming back to the city during that period of time, trying to figure out the financing, how it's going to work, and our representative on Sandbag, Mr. McKecklin, and I, and I guess it was Doug, met with Sandbag's CEO. This idea came from City Hall on how to fund it, how to do it, how to make the project come forward. We were surprised that Sandbag became a willing participant and worked with us, and we were able to move ahead considerably. In fact, it was about 18 months to two years ahead of schedule on that. And the reason that we did that is because we were at the bottom of what appeared to be a recession, and contract prices were going at a good price. We watched those, and we knew for the benefit of the citizens of Victorville and Victor Valley, particularly because of all the way the road funds are spent, that we could come in way under budget if we could get that to bid. And by the cooperation of everyone involved, we did so, and thankfully, it's there, it's working, and I have no doubt that the Daily Press will get that all straightened out, and we will have a wonderful story coming out in the next three or four days. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.
We get a week.
No pressure, Shay.
It's a week. Shay, you don't have to worry about three or four days.